You end up doing a closing on Circle, Circle Drive, Circle Lane down Hyannis?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Did I, did I tell you that story?
No.
No, I was, uh.
Hey, Paul, are you there?
Gula Chinski from Southborough.
I lost you there.
Are you there?
But we're on now.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm on.
Okay. Um, are we, are we good to go?
Yeah, you're good to go.
Okay.
I think, I think we have Mount Vickery first.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Okay, I am calling to order the Southborough Zoning Board of Appeals for August twentieth, twenty twenty five. Uh, we have Doris and Jamie here with myself and Laura in person. Um, Mike and Paul are joining remotely. Um, so, uh, we've got a little bit of a mix. So, uh, first thing we have on the agenda, I believe, is seventy-one Vickery, Mount Vickery.
Yep.
All right, and do we, yep. You can come on up, and Laura, do you want to read the notice?
You've got it. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing at the McCalliv Hearing Room, Seventeen Common Street, Wednesday, August twentieth, twenty twenty five, at seven o'clock P. M. With regard to the petitions of Richard Saunders, seventy-one Mount Vickery Road, Southborough, Mass. The petitioner is seeking a special permit modification to allow the construction of an office on an existing accessory apartment. The property is located in the residential A zoning district and relief is requested under section one seventy-four dash nine.
Thank you. And good evening, sir, you're here, are you the applicant?
I'm the applicant, yes.
Okay, if you don't mind just identifying yourself.
Sure, Richard Saunders, seventy-one Mount Vickery Road.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, so, uh, I see this is a proper, you're looking to modify a, a, a previous special permit, correct?
That's correct, so I can give you a little history of your.
Yeah, yeah.
So, in two thousand and five, we put a accessory apartment onto our main house. It was for my, my daughter and, or son at the time, and we required a special permit because it was an accessory apartment. It also required a, a variance because it had to be attached to the house, so we had to build a walkway and a gazebo and everything to attach. So it was attached to the house, so it's an apartment above a three-car garage, basically is what it was. Um, in, and, and that was fine, about twenty, I have to look at my notes here, but I think it was twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, we added, there was an existing deck, or, uh, yeah, a deck, and we enclosed that with a Brady sunroom. And we got a special permit, I mean, not a special permit, we got a billing permit for that project. And at that time, the billing inspectors didn't say we needed to modify the permit, uh, the special permit. We just got a billing, billing permit and they put the room on and that was it. Then, uh, in, a year ago, right around this time a year ago, October, we, uh, my other, my dau-, another daughter and her family live there now. And, uh, they wanted to add a little ten-by-thirteen office space. And so this time, it was still within the, the percentages of the original permit, but the, and the billing inspector at the time, in the fall, last fall, said, yeah, no problem, you'll be fine, go ahead. And, uh, so we went through, we got, I hired a builder, blah, 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 we went to issue the billing perm, uh, get the billing permit issued in, I think it was February or maybe March timeframe, which is when there was the issue with the billing inspector. He left, they had the interim, the new, uh, Gene is the new interim billing inspector is there. When he got it, he got the, looked at the, um, uh, the project, he said, mm, I think you need to modify the original permit, uh, or the, the original, uh, very, uh, you know what I'm talking, a special permit.
Right.
Uh, and then I went and met with the town planner and she said, yeah, I think we agree that you should, you're still within the guidelines and the percentages, but just to clean up all the paperwork, we, you probably should modify the existing, uh, special permit. So, okay, that's what I did, that's where we're at.
So, so, um, this is, this is sort of within that, that this office space is within that, what, is it ADU?
Basically, it's a, it's a separate, it's a three-car garage with an apartment above it.
Okay.
And, and that apartment has, you know, two bedrooms, a living room, it has the sunroom on it, has a bathroom, has kitchen, it's a full, basically a full.
Yeah.
House, uh, it's roughly eleven hundred and eighty-six square feet, something like that. Um, and then we're adding like eleven by thirteen, or ten by thirteen room as part of that billing.
Okay.
As part of that structure, just as an office.
Okay, and it's just, so, so that's really within what was considered the ADU. But what you're saying is you weren't right up against what the max.
No, we were not up against the max.
So you have room to do this.
Right, and, and ten by thirteen is the room, that puts us at twenty-three point three percent.
Okay, is that, uh, sorry, so the, the, the ADU is above the garage, correct?
Correct.
And, and the, will the office be a, a?
So, the way that, the way it looks, if you look, oh, you don't have the.
Uh, I, I looked at it earlier and actually, I, I'm pretty familiar with it where you are.
See the picture here.
Yeah.
They had started to do a little work, so basically, it's going to be, do you mind if I come up?
That's fine.
If, I'll, I'll put it up here.
Oh, you want to?
That way everybody can.
Yeah, that's fine, great, sorry.
Okay, just give me one second, I want to find the.
Sorry, I, I, I mean, I know, I'm, I know exactly where you are.
Oh, okay.
Sort of have the house on one side and it's connected via a walkway.
Walkway with a gazebo in the middle and it connects to the house, we had to do that in order to get the fairings.
Right, understood, yeah, sure.
It had to be, it, back then, the ADU had to be part, it had to be connected to the house.
Right.
It couldn't be a separate unit, basically.
Yeah, yeah.
So if you, if you look at that, so the room comes out there, uh, that, that gable roof is, is a false roof, that's just architectural. So that's going to come down and the roof line is just going to match the, the original roof line.
Okay.
If you, if that makes sense.
All right, so, yeah. But I, I guess my question is, is the office?
So you'll, you'll enter it from the, there's a stairway that comes from the ground, uh.
Is it, is it at the ground level or is it up at the second?
No, well, the ground level is below grade, if you.
Oh, okay.
You have the other picture there, Laura, I think there's a second picture.
So you're, you're sort of into a hill here.
Exactly.
Okay, all right, all right.
All right.
So it's ground level, but.
You'll look at the other picture.
But it's still, it's still like at the level of the rest of the ADU.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So this is the other picture.
Yeah, look at the other picture, you can sort of see where the, see down, see where the truck is down in the lower, at the, that's the driveway level down there.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
All right.
And so there's a stairway that goes up to the, the residential, the livable.
Right, okay.
And it's a garage, three-car garage underneath that.
All right, very good. So, um, I, and just like for the record here, the planning board did review this.
Yep.
That was in July.
Yep.
Uh, five-zero, they had no problems with it.
I went to that meeting, so, yep.
Okay. And, um, there was also, there was, isn't there, there was something about septic, but where was that noted?
So, um, I was trying to catch our septic inspector today and he actually ended up being out, but he did sign off on the ZBA application. He has no issues because they're not adding another bedroom, so nothing is changing for the septic.
Right, right, so really, yeah, this is, um, I mean, I understand, this is basically trying to catch up.
Clean up paperwork.
Clean up paperwork is what this is really about, um, okay.
And, and clean up paperwork and, and basically, we've gone through, this would be two projects, three different billing inspectors and, you know, they all had their own different, they had a different opinions.
Right, right, okay, all right, good, uh, well, I'm just going to see if other board members have questions on it and then we'll, uh, hear, see if the public has anything to say, Doris?
No, I see it's cleaning up the paperwork, um, so you have a half-built or semi-damalized?
Basically, they just put two boards out from.
Okay, they could, yeah, yeah, okay.
Because we couldn't, we didn't have the per, we didn't, still don't have the permit, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so you, okay, so then it stopped, okay. Okay, no, I really don't have any other questions, I see it as cleaning up the paperwork.
Right.
It's under the twenty-five percent, um, and I know we're well under the five percent rule also at this point, so. No, I don't have any other questions.
Jamie?
I do not have any questions, I'm familiar with this house, I believe I've picked up Girl Scout cookies.
Yeah.
There a number of times.
Yeah.
Um, but no, I don't have any issue with this.
Okay, great, uh, Mike?
You're muted.
You're muted, he knows it.
Yeah, I have no questions for the applicant, no.
Great, Paul?
No questions.
Okay, and we, we don't have Doug, uh, yeah, I, I think I could say that in general, we see that, um, this is really cleanup. Uh, it doesn't seem to have any real impact, uh, we don't, we didn't get any, any, you don't have any comments or, nobody weighed in online or anything. Uh, we don't, do we have anybody, we don't have anybody in the room, uh, is there anybody online who wants to raise it, has a hand raised?
I have two people on Zoom, um, no hands raised.
Okay. All right, uh, well, if we don't have, um, questions from, you know, abutters or any other public board, then I think, uh, I can sort of sense how this is going. Um, we would then want to close the public meeting before we go any further.
Make a motion to close the public meeting.
Second it.
All right, motion to close the public meeting has been made with a second, all in favor respond with a aye, opposed nay, Jamie?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And William's aye, all right, uh, so, um, I think we're all of kind of the same mind here, this seems pretty straightforward. Uh, so if anybody wants to make a motion on approving.
Can I, sorry, I just, I, I was working on the draft of the decision, I want to make sure I get the language correct for this.
Yeah, you're right, that's what I should be doing every time.
No, you're fine, I just want to make sure that we word it appropriately, um, so when I had drafted it, I essentially put that, we're just modifying the square footage allowed, um, in the original decision and that everything else remains the same.
Yes.
Um, all the other findings and conditions still remain in full effect. Um, there was something else that I wanted to throw out there to see if you guys wanted to correct, in the original decision, they put that the main house is thirty-nine thousand.
I was just going to bring that up. We just, we found out when we started digging, and the original, uh, permit says the original house is thirty-nine thousand square feet, that's a big, big house.
That's, that's a lot bigger than it appears from the street.
It is, so I just put in one of the findings that, um, the board notes a typo in the original decision and correcting it to the appropriate square footage.
Okay, all right.
And then, other than that, everything else, all the other findings still remain in full effect.
Yeah, and I don't know if we need to, I mean, I would say the other language in our, in our findings is, you know, does not substantially derogate from the neighborhood, does not impact views, neighborhood values, et cetera.
You got it.
So I think that.
So, yeah, so the original should have clearly been thirty-nine hundred, so we need to add the thousand, how big is this, a ten-by-thirteen to thirty-nine hundred? Because that's how you get to twenty-three percent, I think.
Right, so that, the, uh, the, the original, the, the original house plus the addition is five thousand ninety-five square feet.
Yeah, because I wasn't getting to the math.
And of, of that, the accessory unit's eleven hundred and eighty-six square feet, which is twenty-three point three percent.
Okay.
So the original decision had called out that the primary dwelling was thirty-nine oh nine square feet, um, and that the accessory apartment was only going to be, I think it was eight hundred and sixty-four.
Yeah.
So, we're just kind of modifying those calculations within the decision.
So those two numbers, the gross square footage is up, making the addition within the, within the twen-, under the twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
Right, right, so, so the math is all correct, it was really just a typo and, and that, that was in the previous, uh, decision? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, yes, we can note that as being corrected, okay.
We wouldn't want to incorrect the correction, sorry, make it more further incorrect.
Okay, um, all right, does anybody want to try a motion on this to approve as written? Mike, you're good at this.
Mike?
Can't hear.
What am I good at?
Uh, making a motion to approve the, uh, application as written.
Like to make a motion to approve the application as drafted.
See, I knew it, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the application as drafted has been made with a second, all in favor respond with a aye, opposed nay, Jamie?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Paul?
Aye.
All right, and William's aye, so that, that's approved, congratulations.
Thanks, guys.
And Laura, what's the, uh, the follow-up on the schedule?
Yep, so the filing deadline is September third, but I have most of the decision drafted, I just got to add in the last minute stuff. So.
Okay.
I will send it to you as soon as we have it drafted.
Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Right, what, what, when was it?
Seven-ten.
Okay, yeah, I was, yeah, I was going to say, these guys are seven-twenty, right?
Well, they're here for the next one.
Yeah, yeah.
And then also two-fifty, so you're good to open the one-eighteen turnpike one.
Okay, all right. Uh, I looked at it, but did I? Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
Yep.
And that's the one you had the exercise facility.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, so the next item on the agenda is one-eighteen Turnpike Road, FD two-fifty Turnpike LLC Special Permits. Uh, this one's about allowing an exercise facility and multiple uses on one lot. Do you have the, uh, you want to read the, the notice, Laura?
Yeah. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing at the McCalliv Hearing Room, Seventeen Common Street, Wednesday, August twentieth, twenty twenty-five, at seven-ten P. M. With regard to the petitions, oh my God, I can't speak, Eric Barbieri, uh, one-eighteen Turnpike Road, Southborough, Mass. The petitioner is seeking special permits to allow an exercise facility and multiple uses on one lot. The property is located in the Business Highway Zoning District and relief is requested under section one-seventy-four dash eight C. Two, one-seventy-four dash eight-point-five C. Eleven, and one-seventy-four dash nine.
All right, thank you, and, okay, for the applicant, if you could.
Good evening, uh, George Bonner on behalf of the property owner, David Ferris, and to my left is Eric Barbieri, the business owner, and the applicant of, it's a Patriot Indoor Golf, DBA Back Nine Golf. Um, Laura, thank you for that, she explained why we're here, we're seeking two special permits, one, uh, special permit to allow an exercise facility, which is what we're describing the golf simulation business as, and then another one to allow two principal uses on one lot. So with that, I'm going to turn to Eric and he'll explain, he'll talk a little bit about his business.
Hi, everybody, yeah, just prepared a little overview of what the Back Nine is, um, but please stop if you have any questions or save them for the end, whichever works. Um, but the Back Nine, it's a members-first indoor golf studio and we offer year-round access to the game through full swing simulators, that's the technology that we use. Um, it's the same cutting-edge technology that's trusted by many of today's top PGA Tour professionals, and our space will also include a putting green area, lounge-style seating, and it's going to create a welcoming and upscale environment where golfers of all skill levels can practice, play, or train. And what makes the Back Nine unique is our flexible twenty-four-seven access model, so we offer public tee times, but those are during standard business hours, so non-members can enjoy the facility, and then outside of this, the standard business hours, the space is available exclusively to members through a secure app-based entry system, each entry is time-stamped, it's logged, the facility is monitored twenty-four-seven by high-definition security cameras, and we also use remote access software, which allows us to manage and monitor the space in real-time, ensuring safe and accountable experiences at all hours. Um, just important to note, we don't serve alcohol, we're not operating as a bar or restaurant. Um, the Back Nine's a clean, quiet, low-impact recreational use, similar in nature to like a boutique fitness studio. Typical visit involves one to four players showing up for their reserved session and then leaving when they're finished. Um, we're committed to being an active part of the community, we're going to offer seasonal leagues for both adults and youth, and we're going to create structured social opportunities for golfers to stay engaged throughout the year. Um, these leagues will help foster community-friendly competition and regular play in a fun, supportive environment. And in addition, the Back Nine will support local schools, youth sports, and nonprofit groups by hosting fundraising events and tournaments. In short, the Back Nine's more than just an indoor golf studio, it's a safe, modern, and community-focused facility designed to enhance access to the game and provide positive experience for residents of all ages. So thank you for your time and consideration, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, so I, we've, we've entertained things like this not very long ago. Um, I mean, the first thing I think that comes to mind is, is what's the impact on parking, but if that's set up for office space, I got to think that in general, there's probably less parking and it's more transient, right?
Yeah, uh, just, just to answer that really quickly, um, the parking standard, uh, is the same as office for exercise facility.
Okay.
So, uh, I can't remember exactly what subsection is, probably eleven or twelve, but it's basically the catch-all subsection. Um, and I'll remind the board that this board actually granted a variance allowing three hundred forty-four spots, um, uh, for the use, uh, allocated towards the buildings at one-twenty and one-eighteen Turnpike.
Right, yep, yeah, 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 well, that wasn't that long ago, so, um, right, and, um, also, it seems by the nature of what you described, uh, you, you might have a lot that's opposite of, of the office traffic, right? If that's going to be in the evening, obviously, the office people are leaving, other people be arriving. Uh, I am curious about the, the, the private membership access, that's like any time or certain hours on that.
Yeah, so that, that is available twenty-four-seven, um, so we had, uh, several meetings with the planning board, and I put together a presentation, which we can share with you if you'd like, um, just kind of giving an overview, so this is part of a franchise, so there's sixty other locations open today across the country, um, so I had, if you look, I don't have a hard copy, but it'll be the. Sixty, yeah, so there's sixty currently, there's two hundred total under contract, so it's growing like crazy, so I would say probably by the end of next year, we'll be at that two hundred mark, and there's, I think they're at a, a clip of almost a new franchise location signed almost every day or every other day, so it's, it's growing like crazy. Um, but there is a, a slide there that kind of shows the distribution of the bookings, and you'll see surprisingly quite a bit of people coming at five in the morning, a lot of people like to use this as a way to workout, um, so there's a big uptick then, then it kind of cools off in the afternoon, and then, yeah, that six to about ten P. M. is when the bulk of the activity is there. And then there is, so we do have doctors, police officers, firefighters, people who work different shifts that like to use the facility in the off-hours as a way to blow off some steam before coming back home. Um, so there's some there, um, but it's few and far between, I think ninety-seven percent of all bookings happen between the hours of five A. M. and ten P. M. And then the three percent's that, that offshoot there.
Okay, um, so you, you, you were in front of the planning board with this?
Yes.
Okay, and, and did they have any concerns or questions for you regarding this?
We had two hearings with them, and the first one, they did lay out a lot of questions to which we responded with basically the slide, um, Miss Cahill's looking at now.
Okay.
Uh, they were very satisfied with it, um, they, most of their concerns stem from lighting, which we were able to, they were able to condition in their special per, um, sorry, site plan approval.
Okay.
Um, but they didn't have an issue with the twenty-four-seven aspect of the business at all, it was really just related to lighting.
Right, okay, the, the interior lighting or?
Not the interior lighting, specifically sign lighting, which we have agreed to, uh, turn off at ten P. M. and, um, reopen at six A. M. if we, if it's, uh, dark enough, and then, uh, the light poles in the parking lot, they've agreed to allow twenty-four-seven, um, illumination.
Okay.
Uh, for, like, four or five specific light poles.
Okay, all right, well, I mean, we, we have no communication directly to us from the planning board, uh, so, I was just curious what their, what their general feedback was. Okay, um, all right, um, yeah, I'll, I'll think I'll ask the other board members for what they have for questions, Doris?
Uh, just the square footage, is it on the first or second floor?
It's on the first floor and I want to say it's about forty-four hundred square feet, I don't have the exact number, but.
It's the layout, it's like.
One-six-oh-one.
You have five.
Forty-six, sorry, forty-six-oh-one.
There's not a lot of bays, it was like five or six bays.
Yeah, five bays, exactly, so.
Okay, so you wouldn't even have.
Twenty people's.
Right, I just want to kind of quantify a little bit.
Max, yeah, the average booking, when we did that analysis, is one and a half people per booking, a lot of people show up by themselves, so if you took all, all bookings in an averaged amount, it averages to one and a half, so, yeah, it's really.
And, um, it's, you're not selling, just vending machines, probably.
Yeah, it'll be like prepackaged snacks and soft drinks and that's it.
No lounge area?
There's a lounge area, that's more, so there's going to be a putting green, if you're a golfer, it's going to be a cool one, it's going to shift and create slope and give you all sorts of training programs, and there'll be a little bit of lounge seating there for special events, so, um, we will offer it available if, uh, like, if someone wants to have a Christmas party or something like that, or if we're going to do a fundraising event, um, that lounge space will be used for food and stuff like that.
Just thinking golf, but, okay, so, and how large is the lounge space in relation to the, the six bays?
We try to get as much space in there for bays as possible, so it's just the leftover space, space, I don't know specific square footage.
Like a room, like a big bedroom, like a?
Yeah, probably, it's really the front facing by the, the windows, if you know that building, facing the reservoir, um, where we couldn't fit a bay, the bays are sixteen feet wide by about twenty-five to thirty feet long. Okay, there we go, so, yeah, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, just scale it.
Yeah, so that lounge area is not large at all.
Okay, in relation to, I'm just thinking about the parking, like you were.
Yeah, one concern the planning board brought up was the tournaments, the typical tournaments at the Back Nine, they run about, well, so the events, um, don't get very large because, like you said, right, there's four people at a time that can golf, so it kind of limits just the nature of the size of it. Um, tournaments that we would run for fundraisers, things like that, those typically run two weeks, so it's a show-up, book your time, submit your score to a system, and then there's like a leaderboard you can watch throughout that tournament time. It's not a tournament in the sense of what you might watch on TV where everyone plays at the same time. Like a shotgun start, not that.
Yeah, well, it just seems like the nature of it, you're not really going to be able to have an awful lot of people there.
Yeah.
You said, if you've got four people per bay, you know, that's, you've got twenty people.
Yeah, right, and that would be rare, that it would be, you know, the one and a half average, you're probably looking at, you know, ten to fifteen people max on a busy night.
And no retail, you're, you're not doing any, any swag, any?
Um, there might be a little bit of swag, golf balls and like general golf gear, you know, um, gloves, things like that, consumables, but nothing beyond basic stuff like that, yeah.
Is it B Y O, I know you're not selling alcohol.
No, yeah.
Jamie, your microphone.
It's not, no.
Jamie, your microphone?
Oh, sorry. Should I restate it?
Yeah.
I just asked, um, I know you said that there was no serving alcohol, but if people were going to be allowed to B Y O B or bring their own.
No, yeah.
Yeah, I would think that would, that would be a concern, um, and the, the same thing if you're, people are doing a, a gathering there, that would be expected to be alcohol-free, Christmas parties or whatever. Um, I don't know if the catering company, if they would.
I, I can't speak to what a catering company would be allowed to do, frankly, um.
And in reality, you, you'd have to get a, a permit to do it.
Yeah, okay, a license.
We had this question.
Yeah, we've, we've gone through this before, you would, you would kind of have to go and say, this is what I'm going to do, and it, it wouldn't be in front of us, that would be.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, so, okay. Anything else, Doris?
No, I don't have, just trying to get a sense. No, I don't have, just trying to get a sense of it. Really just, the parking, the lighting's been addressed because there's always a question with our lighting law. Lighting's addressed, four poles, it's been ironed out. And you, although your conservation's a neighbor, four poles seems to be the decision.
Yeah, and it was really, um, the basis for that was safety and security. You know, the same bylaws reiterate that the safety and security of the business patrons come first. So the planning board was nice enough to condition the decision on allowing those four lights, streetlights being on 24/7.
Yeah, you're, I mean, it is an industrial zone.
Yeah, and I'll say the same thing, just reiterate, even though lighting's not on the agenda tonight. But I'll remind the board that we really don't have any residential butters with line of sight to our parking lot, and it's on Route 9. It's really a great location for a business like this.
Correct, I, I would agree with that, okay.
I only have one other question, I'll let go. We don't have any signage requests in this special permit, right?
We, we don't right now, we may, but that'll come with a separate special permit. Right now, as we propose it, the sign is compliant with local zoning bylaws. So we don't foresee a special permit at the moment.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe with window signage, but that's about it.
Okay.
Okay.
Like decals.
Yeah.
Putting decals on the window. It'll be in front of you if, if you decide to go for it.
Yeah, light's not good in the building, so we're either going to have to tin them anyway. So if we could use some of this space for a little bit of advertising, but yeah, obviously, we'll bring that in front of you.
Okay. Jamie?
I asked my question.
You did, that's true.
Yeah, I think it, I think it looks cool.
Yeah, I'm excited about it.
I'm just curious, so do most people, if they're members, pretty much everyone books their time in advance? Because you want to reserve your bay?
Yeah, in the beginning, as I'm building the membership base and it's an empty facility, I'll be there myself and have it open house. And, you know, if someone happens to be driving by or someone else in the office park has their clubs in the back, you know, and they want to come in, give them a demo or spend an hour in there. But yeah, the, once we're up and running, we've built up the membership base to the minimum. Then it's all app-based, so you, you become a member or you can book a guest tee time during those times. The app itself, when it's your tee time, it lights up a button there that allows you to unlock the door. And then that's how you, you get in and use the facility. So you can't just walk in and open the door unless there's a staff member there to support you.
All the layout's down. So, so you have to get through the first door and then the second doors?
Now, the, the bays themselves, we have one private bay. That's really for maybe instructional, if someone's getting a lesson, things like that done. They want to be, have that done in private. But the rest of the bays, as you can see, the, the back wall, those three are wide open. And that back door, what, what goes to the shared bathrooms. Bay number one, you can walk right in there. And just bay five is that one private bay that actually has a door there. That won't have a lock on it, but it's just there to, you know, if someone wants to have-
No, I wasn't, it was just you're coming in, it's more the entry, where you come in and you're there, there's no secondary door.
Oh, no, yeah, we're going to most likely probably use the, that door closest to you as the main door. No, the other one, that, that one there, yeah. We'll have the other one, you know, available to exit in case of an emergency. But the system to, to badge in and out will be that door there.
Okay.
Where's the restroom?
It's, there's a hallway on the top part of the floor plan. And if you go all the way to the right, the shared restrooms are located in that area. Yeah, exactly.
All right, Mike?
Um, I feel like a lot of the questions that I've had have been addressed, so I want to be mindful of time. But I did want to, maybe again, just forgive me, I'm on Zoom and I couldn't hear it. But for the after-hours members, will there be staff on-site? I thought I heard you just say that there'll always be someone there, but maybe I misunderstood that with respect to-
Yeah.
After-hours.
Yeah, so after-hours is 24/7 unmanned facility. So you, you book your tee time, it is, that's why we restrict it to members only during that time.
Okay, maybe I just didn't hear that correctly, but the way you made it sound, it sounded like it was going to be staffed all the time. And then I was like, well, that doesn't make sense.
Yeah, yeah, no, that would get pretty expensive. The membership itself is going to average somewhere between $250 to $300 a month. So it is more of a premium membership. So we fully expect, and this is the experience of those 60 facilities that are open already, that this is more of a, kind of a private golf club feel. Everyone takes care of it the same way that they would replacing their divots and things like they would do at a golf course, right? So clean up after yourselves, leave the bays the way you would expect them to be when you come in. A lot of the members-
I just wanted to clarify that position, that's all.
Okay, great, yeah.
Anything else, Mike?
No, I had, no, everything else has been touched upon from, from lighting to hours to signage, so I'm good.
Paul?
Uh, I have no questions. I, I do think it's a, a nice concept and it's, you know, there's been a lot of these other uses for office areas, a great, you know, great use of space as it's challenging to get office tenants these days. So I, I, I think it's excellent.
Great.
All right, and do we have anybody on Zoom raising a hand?
I have three people on Zoom and no hands.
Okay, anybody in the room? Nope, okay. Okay, uh, so not having any other questions from the board or the public, except for Doris?
So there's just one bathroom?
Well, yes, but it's a shared bathroom, it's the, um-
The locker rooms, and then it shares in the middle?
Yes.
Yes, you don't have to yes me, I mean, just, so we're sharing the bathroom?
Correct.
The bathroom facility?
With the other tenants in the first floor.
Okay, thank you, that, okay.
I'm sorry if I wasn't clear.
No, no, I was just trying to, where's the bathroom?
Yeah.
Is that the act-
It's in the middle of the first floor.
Okay, it's a regular office, which is standard, is it's out in the floor way, and that'll be open off-hours too?
Yeah, yep, it's quite large too. The men's and women's rooms have, I forget how many stalls.
Okay, so when I heard the word shared, I, I felt like we only had one bathroom.
Yeah, no, sorry, no.
That's what I thought of my question.
I thought you might have thought that, yeah, so definitely men's and women's.
Okay, so I understand that I've had offices in lobby area, it's in the lobby.
Correct.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, uh, then-
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second?
All right, motion to close the public hearing has been made with a second. All in favor, respond with aye. Opposed, nay. Jamie?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Williams, aye. Okay, that closes the public hearing. Do you have any, any concerns on findings? I feel like a lot of it's similar.
Yeah.
Really no negative impact on the neighborhood. Accurately pointed out, it is an industrial zone, in a industrial area across from Reservoir. So I think we, we could clearly say that it's not going to substantially derogate from the neighborhood. Sort of similar findings, I would say.
Yeah, not a significant impact on traffic.
Right, we did talk about traffic too, yes.
Yeah, I think the visual aspects are covered through the fact, you know, just the location on Route 9 and, you know, residential.
Right, right. Okay.
I think you guys are-
All right. Do we have a motion on the application as drafted?
Make a motion to approve the application as drafted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve this application as drafted with a second. All in favor, respond with aye. Opposed, nay. Jamie?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Williams, aye. All right, congratulations. And Laura can give you a little bit on the schedule.
Yep, filing deadline for the decision is September 3rd. I have it most of the way done, so we should have it sooner than that. Once it's filed, there's a 21-day appeal period. And then you just need to record it with the registry of deeds if there's no appeals, you know the drill.
Yep, all too well.
So I'll let you know as soon as I have it done though.
Great, thanks, thank you. Thank you, everybody, appreciate it.
Thank you, yep.
Thank you.
Come by whenever, we can open, hopefully, early November.
I, I, I could see my son showing up, yeah, yeah, okay.
Really trying for a fall season.
George will be your first customer.
Oh, yeah.
George has already got a-
Lot less working, a lot more golfing.
Thank you. Okay, so on our, next on our agenda is 250 Turnpike Road. This is the comprehensive permit. And so I, I'll just say that we had an email, that was, I think it was today, right? Just saying, just due to the proximity of when the, the, some of the responses came from HSH, the amount of them, your feeling is, like, your request was to continue without a, a debate, really, this evening, right? And if I've misstated anything, just, just correct me.
You're correct, Chair. I think given the two peer-review comment letters coming in and the amount of comments, we're going to try and narrow those issues down. So I'd like to request that we come back in September 17th. And hopefully, a lot of those issues are narrowed down, both in the HSH letter and the Lucas Environmental letter. And I think we have agreed to extend the deadline to October 15th, which would be the hearing after the September 17th hearing. So if we need a second hearing past September 17th, we'll have it. We've agreed to extend that deadline to that. So I'll provide you a letter tomorrow.
Thank you.
So the extended deadline, you said to, uh, the 15th?
October 15th, which I believe is a regularly scheduled ZBA hearing.
Sounds about right, yeah, okay. Okay, um, all right. Yeah, I, I, I'm, I, I might be stating what maybe the rest of the board thinks too, is that it did come in kind of, kind of late. I know I had the, a brief conversation with Doris about it, and I talked to you in the hallway. There was a lot there. And I think for everyone's sake, the more that your folks can work with our peer reviewers and sort out some of those things, and hopefully get down to a narrower list, I think the better off we'll all, we will all be.
Absolutely, I totally agree.
Okay.
That, that list was in a running format, it was almost like a conversational email. Maybe that's going to, I, I don't know if that's the most appropriate way to do it, but that made it very long too, because you had to rehash over existing conditions. And then the last phone call, and then the last discussion. And it, and it seemed like it had, to me, it felt like it had overlapping points, reading.
Maybe we can get a cheat sheet.
Yeah.
I don't know what to say. How we can do that and also have, see what we need to see.
I don't know.
Yeah, don't need to hold enchilada.
There, yeah, there are some things where, you know, it does say, as, you know, referenced earlier. And, and in fairness, there are some things that are sort of overlapping.
Yeah.
But I, I, I still think it would help us as a board if some of those things that you get to agreement on, and now you just, we look at that and say, no concerns. And we just move on to the ones that maybe are more substantial or where you don't reach agreement. And then we can, then we can really discuss it, so, okay. Anybody, and any from the board have any concern? I mean, it seems like we should just-
No, you hit on it, Jamie hit on it.
What's that?
Jamie hit on it with the, like-
A high-level summary of, here's the little outstanding issues and why.
Yeah.
And everything else is-
Yes.
Fine and dandy.
Agreed, yeah, if we, yeah, right.
We have short, well, I have a short attention span, I don't, I don't know about the rest of the board.
I, I am happy to work with the peer reviewers and that, like, I'm kind of condensing that a little bit and maybe only focusing the reports on what's outstanding.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, so I, in, in light of the fact that we really don't want to have much discussion tonight, I, I don't feel like we need to really have any more discussion and just agree on moving it on. We do need-
Do you have a hand raised?
Do you have a hand raised?
I do. Do you want to do it?
Yep.
Okay. James, you should be able to speak.
Yeah, hey, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, awesome. So just one of the abutters to 250 Turnpike Road. And I just want to make sure that as the, you know, the individuals of board are considering the proposal that, you know, you don't get a kind of edited, um, wave-top discussion of, of what's going on here. You kind of get the full picture so that, you know, we can protect our rights as abutters and property owners as you guys kind of continue to evaluate the, the project. So that's all.
All right, it's sorry, it's sorry, James, you just, you just want to make sure we are, we allow space for, to, to hear from the abutters? Is that more or less what you're asking?
Well, just that you don't kind of get the Cliff Notes version of everything that's downloaded, that it's kind of a, a thoughtfully reviewed scope and project. And it's not just kind of, you know, dictated one way or the other. When I hear kind of just give us the wave tops, I just, I want to make sure that kind of all, all stakeholders are, are considered in this project.
Yes.
You know?
I, I agree. I, I, I think maybe more what we're going after is there's a lot of technical details in here that get into, you know, zones where you can work and how far away from wetlands need to be, et cetera. And the board really relies on peer reviewers, which really are looking at the requirements from our perspective. And they're working with the applicant. So if, if, if they take something that's somewhat technical, the members of the board aren't really schooled in this. So we're relying on the peer reviewer to say, yes, this complies with, you know, the, the requirements. I, I think we always try to be mindful of the abutters. But I, I do thank you for your, 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 your concerns.
Yeah, and if I could comment on that, I think that the Cliff Notes or summary comment is to just say that we get these detailed reports and a lot of things are agreed on by both parties. And so it would be nice to easier, see an easier highlight of where there's differences. Because that's where we really need to focus our time. Because if both our peer reviewer and the applicant are agreeing, you know, we're not experts. We're not going to come in and say these two experts agree and we don't agree with them. So that was the point of that comment.
Yep, fair enough. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
John Palmer, 131 Parkerville Road, a direct abutter. I've got just three questions for the, the board. The first is a general question, just trying to understand where we are with this entire process, this entire permitting process for the comprehensive permit. And, and, you know, what the timeframe looks like for some sort of decision. So that's the first question. Just generally, where are we?
Well, I could, it would be good to have Jay here, but, um, so where we are is we are, you know, our, our, our peer reviewers have looked at their plans. There's been a little bit of back and forth. We've heard back from, this was civil stormwater and what was the third one?
Traffic.
Traffic. So they're just noting things that are either minor, like, well, this is what this detail is supposed to be on the plan, I don't see it. Or it's maybe more substantial about how stormwater is managed. Or I think there was something in there about, well, you're supposed to have, you know, a, a 12-inch pipe and you have an 8-inch pipe, things like that are being worked out. So, um, you know, those kind of things need to get worked out. What they're asking for is to move the date by which we're supposed to make a decision, or close the, close the hearing, right, to October 15th. Now, I'm, I'm just going to base this on my very limited knowledge, which was on the previous 40B. And even once we, we, we closed that and we said, all right, we're, we're approving, then there was a whole list of conditions. And that is, if there's anything in there that the peer reviewers and the applicants disagree on, then we just say, all right, well, this is a condition of you getting approval for this. And, and at, at that stage, you know, the applicant has sort of said, we just want to go forward. So if you, they don't really have a say any longer over whatever condition we, we, we set down. Now, overall, in terms of when do they get permitted? I mean, there's an awful lot of steps to go through after we, if we do get to, you know, approval of it. Like by comparison, I mean, 120 has been approved. I think we just recently signed some of the plans, right? And there's still, you know, there's no, no shovels have broken any ground there. There, I think there's still a lot of permitting to go through. And I think Mr. Bonon would know better than I what, what it looks like realistically for his schedule. So, I mean, generally, what, I mean, once you get to that point, are you still talking years away from it, months away from it?
Well, I'll, I'll speak to the 250, if you'd like to. I'll give you my best guess in terms of a timeline. I anticipate that this board may close the hearing maybe within the next two hearings. I, I think we're going to have a lot of- I, I think we're gonna have a lot of progress with the engineers working together.
Okay.
Once you close the hearing, we'll have another hearing, it'll be a discussion hearing, though, not a public, so no more public comment at that point, and the board will discuss amongst themselves whether they want to approve the project, and with what conditions. And some of those conditions can range from providing an easement plan like we did recently by a, a date certain, and then pulling a building permit from a year from the point of approval. So it could be, you know, a, a year, at least a year from when you guys approve the plan, which could be in the next three months, something like that, till when shovels hit the ground, or building permits issued.
Right, okay.
So the, so that's helpful, thank you. And then two follow-ups to that. I've raised two issues in two separate letters that I've seen in the peer reviews as well, and I'm just wondering when those two issues get addressed. The first is, you know, I, it's my understanding that the applicant is gonna have to apply for a variance through Mass DEP for the septic system design, given the septic systems design proximity to wetlands, and, and a tributary that feeds the Sudbury Reservoir System. So I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if that, if the applicant has applied for that variance as of yet, and where that fits in the process.
Okay.
And then, secondly, it's my understanding that this is gonna need a NPDES general construction permit from the EPA, because it's, you know, impacting more than five acres of development within, within close proximity to these wetlands that feed the Sudbury Reservoir System. So I'm wondering if that general construction permit has been applied for, and where that fits in, in the process as well.
Sure, to answer Mr. Palmer's first question, it's not a variance we're seeking from the state, but rather an endorsement from the Board of Health, the Southborough Board of Health, which has been applied for, and we anticipate endorsement at their September public hearing. So that should put to bed the tributary questions, because when they endorse the plan, they'll basically be approving the setbacks for the septic systems. As to the second question, I really can't speak to, I'm not familiar with it, if I'm being frank, but if there's a general, a general construction permit that needs to be applied for with the EPA, we may have our wetlands engineers do it, or our wetlands firm consultants do it. I'm not sure if we're required to or not, though, I can't really speak to it.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, that's, this is something you've raised.
Yes.
Yeah.
I've raised it, I'm just wondering when those two issues that I've raised, that have been also, that have also been raised as part of the peer review, get addressed either by the ZBA, or by, or by, you know, other boards?
David, I may?
Yep.
I think some of those, if they don't get resolved within the peer review process, something like the NFTs permit could be included as a condition of approval in the decision. I think we included something similar about, you know, the applicant still needs to get all required state and federal permits in order to even move forward with the, the process. So if it doesn't get addressed, which I would think the tributary and septic issues will be addressed as the peer review comes out, I think currently that hasn't been addressed because the peer reviewer didn't have sufficient information to comment on that piece of it, so hopefully we get that from you guys, and then that will be resolved. But they still need to comply with all state and federal permits.
And so when would the abutters and the public be able to weigh in on that tributary and septic design issue?
Well, if I understand it correctly, the, at the Board of Health?
Yes. I'm not sure if it's a public, or, I'm not sure if the endorsement would be a public discussion or not, it could be a discussion item, which may not invite public comment, you'd have to reach out to the Board of Health, Mr. Palmer, I'm unsure, but I, I know it's going to be up for endorsement at their September hearing, our septic plan.
Yeah.
Which would put to bed the tributary questions, because they'd, in, they'd, by endorsing it, they'd be approving the setbacks of the septic systems.
Right, right.
Okay. I will follow up with the Board of Health.
Okay. And did you have a third question?
No, that was it, you know, just generally trying to understand where those, where those two issues fit into the process.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Any other hands raised?
Other hands.
So we need to approve, or we need to continue the hearing to September seventeenth. I mean, they need to provide us a letter to extend the deadline. I always forget, we have to vote on that as well, don't we, to extend it?
We have, yeah.
Okay. So, first of all, yeah, can we, we, we should have a motion to continue the, the public hearing to September seventeenth?
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing to September seventeenth for-
What, what time, what?
We can do seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
Okay, seven o'clock.
For two fifty Turnpike Road, forty B project.
Second.
All right. Motion to continue has been made with a second.
Will there be any, anything else on the agenda that evening?
No.
Okay. Then seven, sounds good.
All right. Jamie?
Um, aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Williams, aye, okay. And so we should take a vote to extend the deadline to close the public hearing to October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Make a motion to extend the public hearing to October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Or the, yeah, the deadline to close it.
Deadline to close the hearing to October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion to extend the deadline to close the public hearing has been made with a second, all in favor, respond with aye, oppose nay, Jamie?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Paul? Aye.
All right, Williams, aye, okay? And you'll, you'll provide the, the, the letter, George?
I'll do first thing tomorrow morning.
Yeah, great, thank you. Okay, so, other business properly before the board, I had one, reorganization of the board. This is where Mike becomes the chair, right? So the, the, the positions are Chair and Clerk, right? Okay. So anybody have a strong need to be the Chair?
Nope.
Not everybody at once.
Not, literally, I've got more kids than I, I clearly, in my fifties, have started to collect children, I've got a new two-year-old foster daughter, like, absolutely fricking not.
Let's tell us how you feel.
All right. Do we have a nomination then, for the Chair?
I nominate David to be the Chair.
I second that nomination.
Uh, we have a nomination to be the Chair with a second, all in favor, respond with aye, oppose nay, Jamie?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Paul? Aye.
Williams, aye.
Thank you very much, thank you.
It's gracious of you.
I'm sorry, thank you.
It's okay.
I'm sorry, thank you.
And so for Clerk, this is, Mike, this is something you've done.
Yep.
I think, as, I mean, I think, Jamie, you're an attorney as well, aren't you?
I'm happy for Mike to-
You're happy for Mike, okay.
I'd be happy for Jamie to take over Clerk, I mean-
I don't know what you even have to do.
I don't either.
Oh.
I was gonna say, it's really not much of anything, I think typically the Clerk, if the Chair can't make it, the Clerk has been, like, somebody who fills in as acting Chair. But David is so good with his attendance.
I know. I, I mean, Mike doesn't want to do it, I'll do it, but I'm, I don't have a burning desire to do it.
It's, it's literally, some people like to have titles, some people, you know, like, and again, like, some, I've seen some boards, and they, they like, they fight for these positions, and it's like-
I don't, I don't think that's how you would characterize this board.
No.
I would not characterize this board this way, we fight, we fight not to have these positions.
So, all right, do we, do we want, are we, Mike, are we sticking with you? I'll, I nominate Mike Robbins to be Clerk.
I'll second it.
All right. Motion has been made for Mike Robbins to continue as Clerk with a second, all in favor, respond with aye, oppose nay, Jamie?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Williams, aye, okay, congratulations, Mike.
You got it, yay, oh my god.
All right, and that, that's it, that's all we have for organizing, organizing the board, right? All right, next item is approval of meeting minutes, July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. I could try to, I, I did read these just today, and now, I'm having a hard time telling you exactly what was in it, but I didn't find there to be any problems with the minutes. Anybody else?
I had no problems with the minutes, I read them today.
Okay. Mike?
Make a, make a motion to approve the minutes as drafted?
Second.
All right, motion to approve the minutes for July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five has been made with a second, as drafted, I mean. All in favor, respond with aye, oppose nay, Jamie?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
All right, and Williams, aye, okay, very good. So ADU bylaw discussion, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna sort of, I'm gonna admit, I don't have a lot to, to add here, what, do you, do you have a summary of where we stand with that, Laura?
Yeah.
If you don't mind.
No, not at all. So the Planning Board met on Monday to discuss some draft language for the Fall Town Meeting. They are doing, this warrant article is more administrative in nature, so it's really just to align our definitions, so changing it from accessory apartment to accessory dwelling unit to align with the definition of the state. And then just amending anywhere in the zoning bylaw that it says accessory apartment, changing it to accessory dwelling unit, and then they are getting rid of that five percent cap, because it makes no sense.
Four-year, four-year campaign on that.
You're there.
Really feel like we're progressing.
Congratulations, Doris.
Yeah, yeah, so did they get our feedback at all? We've gotten, if you can continue commenting, did they get our feedback, like, there's some rumblings from us about maybe removing some language regarding the control of-
Sorry, could you speak into the microphone, I'm having a hard time hearing you?
So what else, besides, I, there was a, a email that was circulated, that I did comment on, I think Mike might have commented on it.
Yeah.
And any progress in, without going into all that detail?
So I think they are leaving that piece of it alone until the Spring Town Meeting. I think they're going to revisit an ADU bylaw similar to what was presented at Annual Town Meeting this spring, but I don't have any details, they haven't discussed that.
Okay.
I think that is something that they want to have proactive conversations with the ZBA about.
So that existing language, Mike, that has to do with, when you got the accessory department, you had to go through planning, and I think we were talking about bringing that all back to ZBA on ADUs.
Well, 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 that and the, and the site review requirements, because I thought that was a bit onerous, too.
But it's always been in the code.
Absolutely.
That was, it has always been in the code, so if we can get that communicated twice for spring is fine.
Yeah.
Because I don't think, if we put that, if we made that big change in the fall, it will, it will, it will get through.
What day is the Fall Meeting?
I want to say it's October twenty-seventh. It's October twenty-seventh, because they moved it up, it was November third, but the room wasn't available, so they bumped it up to the twenty-seventh. I mean, the public hearing for this ADU bylaw is opening, I think, September eighth. So Planning Board's gonna have public hearings starting then, if you guys want to attend, just let me know, so I can post an agenda. But I also think if you guys want to start conversations with planning about a different ADU bylaw similar to what was proposed before, and start working on that sooner rather than later, it can't hurt.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to throw out, there's a section, let's say for the spring, there's another section in the bylaw that talks about historical gets thirty-five percent, but our petition today, applicant today, was twenty-five percent of the total square footage. Was there, what am I missing on that, why is that there?
Why is it there in, in general?
Yeah, yeah, what, what's, what, so what could happen, like, the house becomes all ADU, and like, what was the detriment that caused someone to put the percentage in?
Yeah.
Because it's like an ADU, I mean, you got, I know it's a single-
I think they wanted to just limit the size-
Four?
Of ADUs.
You think it limits it, really?
It, it does.
Yeah.
But I think there's more discussion to be had there, and I've started that with Mimi a little bit, because-
Yeah, like, well, how'd we get there, it's not, let's change it, it's like, so there's a section in the code that says, I just don't want to have a discriminatory percentage that works for high-end people, who would always benefit from that, but not work for the lower people, and put them in the special, that's where, where I'm coming from.
I completely agree, and I love that you said that, because I actually have spent a ton of time on that. And I threw it out there to Mimi and Karina, just to be like, hey, we're, you know, what are your thoughts? I think it's something to tackle in the spring, but I am happy to loop you in on that, because I had the same thought, because I felt that it was not equitable for owners of smaller homes.
Right.
And I think there's an opportunity to allow people to have larger than what's allowed by right via special permit, that would give homeowners of smaller homes a little more wiggle room, but then would also cap it on the high end, so that people are not building ADUs that are the size of a single-family home, you know?
Well, we already have issues when people build the access, well, they're not accessories, they're additions to the home, but I'm very pro people that, being able to do what they want within their home, to expand their homes, and sit within the setbacks, if we can just get the setbacks and the heights correct, but it's just a question to really, yeah, involve me with that, yeah.
Yeah, I'd love to.
Involve me, and I'm really happy to see that possibly go, and then it'll just be the definitions and that odd clause, which I, again, you never know what that-
No idea where that came from.
Oh, there was someone in a meeting, and there was logic to it at the time, that we've outgrown possibly, I'm just-
I think so.
That's maybe, okay, so I was-
Yeah, and other towns, just so you know, other towns are, they're, they're putting forward less restrictive ADU bylaws, like, they're putting in some language with reducing setbacks for ADU, setback requirements for ADUs, and I'm trying to think of the town on the Cape, and it's twelve hundred square feet by right, so, you know, we don't have to be held to the state's restrictive standard, that's the, that's the demeanor.
That's the demeanor, right?
Yeah. To allow that, like, the density of, like Marlborough is not a town that compares to, but what goes on in their multi-unit housing really appeals more to their density and the amount of population they have there, where, I see your point, that's interesting, Mike, that's a really interesting thought to go about, because everybody understands square foot, whereas percentages, what we often get with that percentage, is because you saw me do it today, I'm adding to the total gross, you know, they're doing the same thing, and say, oh no, that's a storage unit, no, I, I get it, and that's part of the square foot, let's just get a storage unit and get around the work versus, that's really an interesting thought, where we're just trying to get more units in, interesting.
And right now, with the state regulations and our bylaw as it's written, that twenty-five percent only benefits people with larger homes, because if you have a home that's smaller than eighteen hundred square feet-
I'm with you, yeah.
Your twenty-five percent is less than what's allowed by right, so there isn't even room for them to go larger at this point, so I do think-
But that, that would bode to, it'd be difficult to get into our special meeting, to the discussion, to get it in there, because you're saying they can't have nine hundred square feet because they got a small, yeah, yeah, I'm with you.
Doesn't, doesn't the, the, the state, doesn't that law basically supersede us saying you can't have it, because you're allowed up to nine hundred sixty square feet?
So they're allowed fifty percent of your gross floor area, or nine hundred square feet, whichever is smaller, so if your house is less than or equal to eighteen hundred square feet, you can only have your fifty percent of gross- So if your house is less than or equal to eighteen hundred square feet, you can only have your fifty percent of gross floor area. And then if you wanna go larger, we currently have no avenue to do that.
Yeah.
Because you're bound to the twenty-five percent. But that's smaller than your fifty percent.
So if you have like a thousand square foot home, you can't even get the nine hundred. You're.
You're limited to five hundred.
Five hundred.
You're limited to five hundred, yeah.
Well, that doesn't seem fair.
In a way, it makes sense because it keeps it proportional to the size of your home. Like, you don't wanna build a thousand square foot ADU when you have a thousand square foot home, because that's.
That's it. Because the, the unit is supposed to be accessory to the primary dwelling, but the challenge is, is it's just, it's too restrictive.
It is. And under our current bylaw, if you have a ten thousand square foot home, you can build what, like a twenty-five hundred square foot.
Yeah, right.
ADU, which is bigger than.
I don't think that that's accurate. Is that, is that, I don't think that that's the case.
My math could be off, but they can have.
No, I think nine hundred is the cap for a protected use ADU.
Under a special permit.
Oh, under special permit, sure. I'm sorry.
We couldn't deny it easily because we say you can go up to twenty-five percent, which I have seen the applications come through. I'm not against it at all necessarily. It's just the applications come through, making the math work, so it's just under twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
I mean, like the thing with the attachments, yeah.
But I think too, that the accessory apartment applications that we've gotten, at least in my time here, they're for smaller homes. You know, you don't have somebody.
Hundred percent.
Who has a ten thousand square foot home looking for an ADU.
They're for, they're for boomerang, never leavers, uh, parents, disabled members.
Yeah, it's, it's aging in place. That's the thing.
Reasons for it. So, um, yeah, uh, there was something else I wanted, I was like, all these things I wanna change.
Well, I'll, I'll send you what I have, um, because that was something that I've been toying.
Oh, I know. And I did see language about, was it trailer homes? I caught that. Uh, trailer homes.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, hold up, trailer homes. But did, I don't know if I'm gonna come up with samples, but exclusions and trailer homes was on there. Oh, we do not, and we may not be able to address Airbnbs taking up an ADU. I don't think, maybe we even have the right to, to address that.
I think.
It had to come up.
Yeah.
At some point in time.
I think they are including language that they can't be within a mobile home or travel trailer. Um.
Yeah, the, 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 the bylaws from the state prohibit, um, non, so accessory to ADUs and protected use ADUs are for structure. And so the goal of the legislature is they didn't want like those homes on wheels. They didn't, this isn't for mobile homes. It has to be accessory to the primary dwelling. It cannot be a transient property. Um, so, you know, they want that accessory dwelling unit to have its own bathroom, kitchen. And so there, there is a specific exclusion for those type of, of, of properties. So. But you're allowed to have manufactured homes. So it's a little bit of a difference there, but it just, it can't be on wheels effectively. It has to have its own living space. Um, you know, things of that nature.
Portable, maybe. But people could.
Portable, no.
Portable.
It can't be portable.
No, it can't be.
Cannot be portable.
Can't be, probably could be a container. I've actually seen.
Could not.
No, no, probably, no, have you seen containers going as, as accessories to hold up structures? Okay.
And they've been doing like the tiny homes and stuff.
Tiny homes, there's all sorts of variations.
I, I just learned the other day that there's a distinction between a tiny home and an ADU within this.
Correct.
Building code too, so I don't know how that complicates things, but.
Yeah, I didn't know about, um, I know it came up in early planning meetings. Um, I just don't think it'd be prohibited. If you had an ADU, you'd be able to rent it short-term on Airbnb or Booking.com or Verbo. I, I'm not seeing other than the marathon that we have an event nearby that would happen, right?
Yeah, I mean, any, I, anything that might be going on at one of the private schools, right?
Yeah.
Parents come in for a weekend. Yeah, I, I thought that was really the discussion, that you, it was difficult to say you can't.
I think we can't.
Rent it out via Airbnb. Like, that's something we don't, I thought it was, we don't really wanna touch that one.
Well, the major cities went ahead and started touching for fire and safety reasons because they circumvent, uh, hotel, uh, hotel regulations.
I think technically if it's an Airbnb, you're supposed to have an annual building inspection.
Airbnb's out there. They've had, they've had some problems.
Yeah.
Inspecting that, um, that the places have sprinklers.
Yeah.
There's a higher standard when you're renting out.
Yeah.
Uh, but people rent their homes, so I, I think you gotta leave it. That was the thing. You gotta leave it. Um, I, I think it's more at the state level, but some of the cities have done some crackdown for, it's, it's for safety too. You've got people coming in part-time and people don't normally run units. Um, run units and they're doing it for commercial purposes. I'll probably just, just mentioning it. I'm not really biting hard on the bullet on it.
No, it's, it's, I think it's good to think about because it's gonna come up as part of the discussion, so.
I don't think we can regulate it, would be my gut.
Right.
Or group homes. Because in the code, it, it says that you can have all these various types of family. There's no. Who's telling me who to live in my house? They don't have to be related to me.
Yeah.
You know? I could run a shelter. Why not?
Right.
Right, okay. Everyone's gonna get nervous. Be good for Southborough.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any, anything else on the ADUs? Okay, administrative updates, um, Laura, upcoming schedule?
Yeah, um, we just have, our next meeting is September seventeenth. Um, and the only thing on our agenda for that will be the two fifty Turnpike forty B. Um, and then after that is October fifteenth. I know of at least two applications that are probably on their way, uh, for that meeting, but.
Okay.
That's, that's all we got.
That's not bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so with the, the status of the peer reviewers, September seventeenth could be, I mean, it, it could be an involved meeting. Depends how it goes.
It depends on the turnaround.
Yeah.
Um, there was a lot that needed to be addressed, so we'll, we'll see how quickly we get.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised if they can't get through it all and we're back with them on October fifteenth as well. Okay. Um, so the last item you had on the agenda here is zoning bylaw updates. And these, these are some of the things that you've been chasing, right?
Yeah, so just wanted to keep you guys informed of what's going on. So there's a couple zoning bylaw updates that are going through for a Fall Town meeting. Um, so the ADU being one of them. There's another one, um, to add in a new use category in the Industrial Park District for highway major retail. Um, and this would be allowed by special permit through the Planning Board. This is being presented by the new property owners of the old Dell EMC property. Um, so that public hearing, I think, is also set to open on September eighth. Um, they met with the Planning Board on Monday and had some discussions, and I think there was some stuff that they might tweak a little bit. Um, and then the only other one is the Planning Board has been working on adding additional uses into the Industrial Park District outside of that highway major retail, um, just as a way to kind of relax the zoning a little bit and modernize it so that more commercial businesses can go in there without.
Without coming to us.
Without coming for approval, yeah.
To get approval and we say, sure, that sounds great.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
Okay.
Um, all those, I think, are slated to be on the warrant for Fall Town meeting.
What's the summary of highway major retail? What is that?
It is, so it's very, very specific in, let me see if I can find.
And I don't, I don't wanna, I don't mean to drag us through every, all the detail. I just thought in general. What, what's the idea behind it?
Yeah, that, the high level is, he, highway major retail use is located on a single lot um, that has a minimum area of twenty acres. Um, it's really, think like something like a Whole Foods or, you know, like a bigger retailer with like other smaller ones around it. So the way that it's written is very specific where there are, I think, at most two lots that this would even apply to. So it's not something that then, you know, you'd have a Costco popping up in the middle of town or anything. Like, it's very specific, so this is more of a project-based zoning proposal. Um, and, you know, so it's in there. What I'll do is tomorrow, I'll send you all the draft language for all of these. Um, but it would also only be allowed by special permit through the Planning Board, so.
Okay.
There'd be some oversight there.
Okay.
So, that's all I've got.
Okay. That was the last item on the agenda, unless we have something else you wanna discuss? You still with us, Paul?
I'm still here. I'm waiting.
I'm in the dark.
Your turn.
I'd like to make the motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All right. Motion to adjourn has been made with a second. All in favor, respond with aye, oppose nay. Jamie?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
William's aye. Thank you very much. That adjourns the meeting. Nice job.